Good evening, we're going to call the Victoria County Municipal Council meeting for December fourteenth, two twenty. To order, you have received the agenda for this evening's meeting. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, we have a motion to accept the agenda circulated, please.
So moved.
Moved by Deputy Warden Daphne, seconded by Council McNeil, all in favor? Contrary minded. Motion's carried, the agenda has been approved. Just before we start this evening's meeting, we certainly recognize that last week was a very tragic week in Victoria County, with three tragic motor vehicle accidents which resulted in four fatalities. And on behalf of council and the residents of Victoria County, we wish to express our deepest sympathies to the families of the victims, and we would like to acknowledge that with a short moment of silence in their memory, please. Thank you very much. In keeping with last week, we certainly want to acknowledge all our first responders that had to deal with the accidents, including our volunteer fire department, the RCMP transportation staff, and our paramedics, and anyone else that was involved with the accidents. Their courage and bravery are appreciated by all the residents of Victoria County, so we want to acknowledge them as well. Thank you very much. First item up to business this evening is we have a presentation from Hannah Sis on behalf of Theatre Badek, and she is joining us. The assume this evening, so Hannah, are you there?
Hi, everyone, yes, I am here. I just popped in the chat, I don't know if anyone's reading that, I am having a hard time hearing you folks. So you just might have to, I don't know, just holler if you need to interrupt me. But I think if I understood Bruce correctly, I'm good to get started, is that right?
Yes, you are, and we'll certainly try to increase our volume, and maybe what we will do is you go through your presentation and then we'll address the questions with appropriate volume at the end of your presentation, does that sound reasonable?
That sounds great.
Can you hear me okay now at this volume?
Sorry?
Can you hear me okay at this volume, so we get a sense of how loud we have to be?
I can, it's not so much the volume as it's kind of cutting in and out, I'm not sure where the microphone is.
Yeah, it's probably our internet connection, however, we'll let you start, we can hear you just fine, and welcome to council, and if you wish to start your presentation, please do so.
Okay, I will, thank you so much, Bruce. Hi, everyone, thanks so much for having me here this evening in this in this strange but now becoming familiar way. What a year we've had, to be sure. And I do want to especially say hello to Barbara Longba and Jackie Organ, the two new councillors. I have had the honour of presenting to council for a few times before, but you are two new councillors, you're new to council and you're new to me, so I wanted to especially say hello to you. So I'll just take you through what I'd kind of like to talk to, speak about with my time with you this evening. Because there are some new members, I'll just briefly sort of take you through sort of a bit of a background on Theatre Badek and what we've been doing in the community for the past five years. I'll take you through what happened with us in 2020, this very strange year. Then I want to discuss 2021, and this is of course kind of the most important part of my presentation. I want to talk about our plans and our challenges, and most importantly, I want to talk about the important role I think that Theatre Badek will play in Victoria County as a recovery driver in this tourism economy. And then of course I'll wrap up with our ask for 2021. Now, I don't know if folks got the executive summary that I passed on to Dan Coffin just earlier this afternoon. Yeah, I know, it was very late, so if you didn't, no worries, I can send that out afterwards, and then I can send the slide deck as well if there's anything that folks missed and that they wanted to see again, so I'll send that out afterwards. So just a quick recap, Theatre Badek, we are a not-for-profit, we are governed by a board of directors that you see there, you might recognize some of those names, they are local community members and business owners. And we are operated by a two-person team of artistic producers, and that is myself and Kristy McCraesus. As obviously you can see, Kristy is not with us this evening, but certainly is in spirit. So that's the team. And Theatre Badek has been a professional theatre producer here in town since 2015. We have produced twelve productions over those five seasons, which have received four Merit Award nominations and two wins. The Merit Awards are awards granted every year for achievement in professional theatre province-wide, so it's quite an honour to be recognised by the Merit Award jury and as many times as we have. And we have been growing every year since we started. We've had a three hundred and thirty-three percent attendance increase since our very first season, and we continue to grow at a pretty steady rate every year, so as much as twenty-four percent just in our last season alone. We are proud to be such a strong employer of professional artists, designers, and technicians here in the province, so we have engaged and employed fifty-six of those folks since 2015. And we are very proud to be such an important part of the tourism economy in Victoria County, and that to be recognised by visitors through TripAdvisor reviews that are all very positive, and we are ranked number one on things to do in Badek, Nova Scotia. And a key metric for us is that eighty-six percent of our audience are visitors to Victoria County who, as a result, must spend in a local economy. And so a further breakdown of that, you'll see here on this bar graph, so when I talk about outside Victoria County, of course, I do mean other parts of Cape Breton itself, so folks coming from Sydney or wherever. And then we do have a considerable portion of our audience who are visitors, who spend by going to restaurants, staying overnight in hotels, etc. And a key metric that I'm going to bring up a little bit later is that our largest audience segment is in fact mainland Nova Scotian tourists, and that is our fastest-growing audience segment. So that's great, because we're well-positioned to encourage visitation to the area amongst folks who will spend in the economy but also have a great chance of returning year over year and start to be loyal to our product, so I'll be talking about that a little bit later on. And then this chart on the right here, again, this is just some background so that folks kind of know how we operate. We rely on revenue from a multiple of sources in order to fund our seasons. Fifty-four percent of our income comes from ticket sales, and if that seems low, it's actually higher than most other professional theatres in this country. The average for professional nonprofits is to cover forty percent of expenses from ticket sales, and we have managed to achieve fifty-four percent, so we're quite pleased with that. But it does mean that a great portion of our year is fundraising, and that is from the private sector and the public sector, as you see in this bar graph here, pie chart rather here. So the point here is that so much of our year is fundraising and preparation for a season that is outside of the season itself. And that kind of comes into play when we talk about our need for operational funding. So, again, this is background for those who saw my presentation last year. In February of 2019, we applied for operating funding from Arts Nova Scotia, a provincial, the provincial government's arts funding body, and we were recommended for funding by the jury of that granting body, but we were not funded due to insufficient funds. So that's a whole other saga in regards to the provincial government, but the point here is that that body felt that we were in a good position to start to receive that funding, but we are not getting it, and so that is a challenge for us. So, again, this is just background for new councillors. We are so pleased and grateful to have received fifteen thousand dollars in support from Victoria County since 2017. And again, just as a recap, we, Kristy and I presented to council this time last year, and at that time we asked for a two-year commitment to ten thousand dollars each year in support of our operating budget, but we chose to withdraw that ask in the spring when our season got cancelled. So again, that's a recap for existing councillors and new information for our two new councillors. So, this takes us to 2020. The year started very well. We announced our biggest production to date, these four full productions that you see on the slide here, and we were very excited about those four shows, and so was the public. Our season pass sales were up five percent over the same period in the previous year, which is an exciting metric, because that's people committing to our entire season in February and March, so that's many, many months before the shows, they're willing to commit funds to the season because they're excited about what we have on offer. And finally, on March third of this year, we had our first-ever fundraiser at Twenty-Four Queen Street, and it was a sell-out event, I think many of you folks were there. It was a super fun evening with entertainment and food and drink, and we were so encouraged by the response to that event and felt that it could become something that we do annually, and again, would become part of growing our strategy to build the private sector piece of our revenue generation pie, which is an important part for our company to continue to grow. Then a little thing called COVID-19 happened, I'm sure I don't need to tell you much about that, so our 2020 season was not able to proceed as scheduled. And so as a result, we spent the summer, Kristy and I spent the summer engaged in a lot of important long-term strategic planning. These are just some of the pieces that I wanted to mention briefly to you this evening. We are making connections with Ski Cape Smokey about winter tourism opportunities, about ways that we can have theatre on the island throughout the year, and ways that we can connect with Inghgash, so that we're very pleased with the conversations we're having there. We also are laying the groundwork to start the more of a play development arm of our company, which is again, something we can pursue in the off-season, and that's, you know, us helping with develop new plays that can get written from a Cape Breton perspective and have them produced right here in Badek. And we are working on applying for charitable status, this is another important piece of our lifecycle that takes a considerable amount of effort, so we were pleased to be able to commit time to that this summer without a season. But I do want to highlight that there's nothing like a pandemic to sort of highlight certain vulnerabilities in your organisation, and that operational funding is a huge vulnerability for us. Most of our revenue sources are really quite tied to projects, so it means that when we don't have a season, when we don't have shows on offer, all that revenue goes away. And then our funds in order to simply operate and to seek other funding and engage in some of that long-term planning is quite limited. So you'll see, of course, obviously earned revenue is ticket-based. Government support to date from all three levels of government is mostly tied to projects and to specific shows and things like that. And of course, sponsorships by their very nature are connected to events, corporate sponsors provide funds to sponsor specific events, and as we learned, a lot of the federal emergency support that came out during the pandemic, we were ineligible for due to our low payroll, aka our low operating budget. So it just means that in a year that it would have been important for us to keep engaging in activity that would keep us visible, especially to donors and to our patrons, we simply did not have the operating funding to do that. So, that said, looking ahead to next year and our plans. So, in short, we are hoping to, or we are planning to proceed with a version of that season that we announced in early 2020, so some or all of the four shows previously announced, we were very excited about those shows, and we are very excited to be bringing them to Badek, it's just going to depend on how much funding we can achieve to assist with the shortfall that we will experience due to our reduced capacity to earn ticket revenue and to achieve sponsorship dollars. So you'll see some numbers here. We were projecting about seventy-eight thousand in tickets, in ticket revenue for that season. The maximum possible we can achieve is sixty-one thousand. That's due to the two-meter distancing requirements that we have to assume will still be in place in the summer of 2021. Twenty-Four Queen Street's a small building, and when you put that two-meter distance, there's just not as many seats to sell. And so that's that number there, that sixty-one thousand, that's assuming that we sell out a hundred percent of every seat every single night, and we think the chance of achieving that is low. We are not going to have the level of patron return rate that we would usually expect. Quite naturally, patrons, or there are patrons that will still be nervous about returning to a theatre environment during a global pandemic, and that's only fair. We've seen lots of statistics kind of come out about that for that summer. So, it just means that 2021 is going to be a financially difficult season for us, but we're quite hopeful and excited, all the same, about the season, we're so excited to return. And there's a couple of reasons why we still feel this season is more than feasible. And one of them is our audience breakdown, which I discussed earlier. Seventy-two percent of our audience in 2019 are from Nova Scotia. So even if we are experiencing a massively reduced tourism season, which of course I think we have to assume we will, a lot of our audience is still coming from around the province. And so that means that we have a strong basis for people to come to our shows and travel safely when they are doing so, so we're excited about that. We also engaged in phone calls with our donors and patrons this fall as part of our strategic planning and connecting with private sector funders. And a lot of them showed that they are eager to return to our theatre, they missed Theatre Badek shows, they were sorry not to be able to come this summer, and they're eager to return. So that also is encouraging for us. And yes, it's interesting, I'm making this presentation today, the day of when our first vaccines were given to Canadians, and we're hoping that a rollout through 2021, though we know that the summer we will still be living with restrictions, we're hoping that at least it will boost consumer confidence about returning. So we can't anticipate the same level of patron return, but we think that there'll be enough confidence that we can have a reasonable, exciting, and valuable season. So the final and most important point I kind of want to make here is that with all this said, and with proceeding with this 2021 season, we think it's going to be an important driver of visitation for mainland Nova Scotians as the region recovers from a devastating blow to its tourism economy. And here is why we believe that. We see lots of evidence that we are a draw to new, for new visitors to Badek from mainland Nova Scotia, and here are just some of those statistics that kind of back that up. When we work the phones for box office, we are hearing patrons talk about how they want to secure their tickets before they book their hotel, which indicates to us that Theatre Badek was the initial reason for their visit. Also in 2019, we experienced an increase in website visitation with the same amount of advertising investment. And this is a metric that we use that points us to how our brand is having traction with potential visitors. Our name is more known, people are more excited about theatre as a thing to do when they visit Badek. And the main thing, of course, is in the growth that we're experiencing from this specific geographic segment. Our attendance from mainland Nova Scotians grew by a whopping fifty-four percent in 2019 over 2018. We are seeing more and more mainland Nova Scotians come to see a Theatre Badek show every year. And we think that this is because the quality of our product is becoming more known across the province. This is in part due to our success winning some merit awards in 2018, and just generally word of mouth about the quality of a Theatre Badek production. We also, because of this growth in this specific area, we have strong loyalty with our existing mainland Nova Scotian customers who express an interest in returning to Theatre Badek shows every year. This is the beauty of what theatre does, is that it's new shows every season, so you have reasons to come back every summer to see those new shows. And so we have evidence of that loyalty from the calls that we did this fall, as I mentioned. And another key metric is that eleven percent of our mainland Nova Scotians customers return after their first year. And this is encouraging for us when these are folks who have to travel three, four hours. And this is encouraging for us when these are folks who have to travel three, four hours up to see us and spend in the local economy, but there is still a strong contingent of them that choose to return the very next year. And in some cases, they've come every year since 2017, when we started collecting this data. So we're we're quite encouraged by that. So and I always I always like to remind folks of this metric. This was done as part of a Canada-wide study a few years ago. It is a long it is a it is a firmly-held belief amongst theater practitioners that for every dollar spent on a theater ticket, $7 is spent in the local economy. So just to recap, in short, despite challenges, we are Christie and I are very, very excited, along with our board of directors, to be returning with the theater season in 2021. We are confident that we will play an important role in the recovery of Victoria County's tourism economy by encouraging visitation from mainland Nova Scotian customers. But as you see here, we can't do it without help. And so in conclusion, in considering sort of the main three points that I've I hope I've made this evening, which are we have we are in a vulnerable position due to our lack of secure operating funding. We will have to operate on the assumption of reduced earned revenue in 2021. But despite all this, we are hoping to have a positive impact on Victoria County's tourism economy next year. And so we are asking, as we did this time last year, for $10,000 in operating funding for 2021. And we are also asking if Victoria County would consider committing to that for two years with the review process after that. So that that concludes my presentation here this evening. Happy to hear any questions from you folks, hoping I can hear you okay. So let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me, Hannah?
I can.
Okay, we are going to open it to questions. And for those counselors that would like a little bit more detail, I will remind counselors to perhaps raise their voice and be make sure their mic is on so you can hear. Let us know if you can't hear us and we'll repeat the question. So perhaps we'll start with Counselor McDonald, District Eight.
Yes, thank you very much for the presentation. The only question I have, you said that the the possible generated revenue would be roughly of 61,000? Was there any outside provincial? Did you say there was no provincial funding involved there? Or I guess my question is, are there any other provincial funding bodies other than Victoria County?
Sorry, your question was, are there any other provincial funding bodies?
Or I guess any other funding bodies other than Victoria County?
I I I hope I'm I'm hoping I'm answering your question there. Again, it's a little difficult to hear. But when we talk about other other sources of funding from the government, Victoria County is our primary source of municipal funding. We do also receive a little bit of money from Destination Cape Breton each year, a small amount as part of as part of their programs. And then from the provincial government, we do we do get funding from Arts Nova Scotia, which is based on projects. So essentially, we apply for a specific show and we are juried based on that specific show. And then the federal government, we receive some funding for the for their Canada Summer Jobs Program. And we have had some limited success with Canada Council for the Arts, which is the federal arts funding body. But that success has been a bit up and down and certainly is, again, based on projects. I don't know if that answered your question there. Victoria County is our primary source of municipal funding.
No, that's perfect. Thank you very much. Great presentation and good luck in 2021.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Oregon.
Thank you. Great presentation. I've enjoyed your place in the past. Hope to do so in the future again. I have no questions for you at this time.
Thanks very much.
Deputy Warden Dofne.
Yes, thank you, Hannah. Great presentation as usual. Just a question. In your presentation, there's a number of statistics in regards to percentages. Just wondering, like, number-wise, percentages can be a little bit misleading at times. I just what is the actual attendance or I guess how many seats would you have in in the venue per show?
So it's the question, how many, what was our attendance at our first season?
Yeah, no, but your venue, the the number of seats in the venue per show?
Right. Yes, that's sorry, yes. So usually, pre-pandemic, we could fit about 80. But it would depend on it would depend on the seating configuration at the Masonic Hall at 24 Queen Street. For those that have seen our shows, you'll know that sometimes we stage our shows on the on the floor in a thrust configuration. And in that configuration, we fit about 60. If we're up on the stage, then it's closer to 75. When we measured the space for a distanced season, so so with with all the seating being two meters apart, we found we could only fit as many as 28 people. And that's on the assumption that people come in pairs. So if they don't come in pairs, then we can fit even less. So what we're looking at for 2021 is a capacity of 28 tickets per show.
No, that's great. Thank you. Good luck. Hopefully, the pandemic is coming to an end and you can increase your numbers, but good luck this season.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Patterson, any questions or comments, please?
Thank you, Warden. Thank you very much, Hannah. No questions at this time. Like Counselor Oregon, I've attended some of your performances. And I think you're absolutely right that people want something a little different when they visit us. And I think you're providing that.
Thank you, Counselor Patterson. Counselor McNeil.
No, thank you, Hannah, for your presentation. Just one thing, it's not only important for the patrons in Cape Breton, but also the actors in Cape Breton, too. And I'm on a number of committees with an actor from CBRM. And he makes comments what a professional theater company we have here in Victoria County. So good luck for next year and hope to see you back.
Thank you so much.
Counselor McLeod, any questions or comments, please?
Thank you, Hannah. No, at this time, thank you and congratulations.
Counselor Longba, any questions for Hannah?
No questions, just that I've been to many of your productions and I thoroughly enjoy them. And I think it's a really important thing to have in Victoria County. And I'm looking forward to you coming to the Ski Lodge right next door. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Hannah, for your presentation tonight. And certainly want to echo the comments of some of the counselors. I've had the pleasure attending several of your many of your presentations, your plays. They're excellent. And certainly on behalf of council, we we wish continued growth and success. It's it's been a great addition to the community. I can tell you that as somebody that lives in Bedeck. So well done. So your request, if I understand it, and I think I'm fairly clear on it, is $10,000 funding for 2021 and again for 2022.
That's right.
And that would be just pending review after 2021 as you finish your season. So I guess my question to council is, what are what is council's wishes with Hannah's request on behalf of Theater Bedeck this evening?
I think to refer to budget.
Counselor McLeod has made a motion that we refer this request to budget, as we usually do with these types of requests. We have a second, or please?
I second.
Seconded by Counselor McNeil. All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded, the motion's carried. And we just have a quick question or comment from the CAO.
Hi, Hannah. I just want to ask that, like, any any applications that are coming in looking for money, if you can just fill out the application form that is available on our website?
Okay, would you is it good for me to is that something I should submit now?
Yes, and we'll forward that on to budget discussions.
Okay, I will do that. Thanks.
Any other final questions or comments? A good one. Thank you again for your presentation. And we want to send season's greetings to to you. And please have a safe and great holiday season.
Yes, thanks so much. Same to all of you.
Thank you. So we have a second presentation. It's going to take us a minute or two to to hook that up, Dan. Would that be? Okay, while you're hooking up, we are going to just mention that prior to committee council tonight, we had a committee at the hall, and there were a couple of recommendations that came out of that meeting. So we've been a motion to accept the recommendations from the committee of the whole meeting.
So moved?
Moved by the deputy warden, seconded by?
Second.
Counselor McLeod, all in favor? Contrary-minded, motion is carried. And those recommendations from the committee of the whole meeting will be approved as recommended. So our second presentation tonight, we are pleased to welcome Dr. Harless with us this evening. He's joining us via Zoom. He is going to discuss tonight the Black Rock Lighthouse Road. And we're welcoming you to council. Can you hear us okay, Dr. Harless?
Yes, I can.
Okay, we can hear you very well. So I think what we will do, just because of the nature of the presentation, we will let you go through and then we'll open it for any comment or discussion with you. If there's any questions that follow, we've allocated about 15 minutes for your presentation this evening. So welcome to Victoria County Council and please proceed with your presentation.
Okay, thank you. Can you see can you see me okay?
Yes, we can. You're you're nice and clear and loud.
Okay, so yes, thanks for having me here. I am, as the moderator said, I have a home on Black Rock Light Road right next to the Black Rock Lighthouse, which you may or may not be aware is a heritage lighthouse property. The 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 reason I'm presenting with you tonight is that the the people who took over the lighthouse property have been doing quite a bit of development. I prefer the term destruction of the landscape there. They've cut down old trees and they've tore up the land and really kind of made a mess of the property. And it is a property that's been protected under the Heritage Lighthouse Protection Act. And I guess I'm very discouraged by the fact that they were able to, you know, to kind of do the the things that they were doing. My I'm also concerned about the fact that the property right is adjacent to my own home right on the ocean. And it's going to, you know, interfere with the, you know, the quiet and peacefulness of of my property if their plans, which I've been told by reliable sources, one of whom was an engineer that is an investor in my in my research company. They were planning on putting up an RV park on a heritage lighthouse property. And much to my surprise, I found out, I was thinking, well, there's no way that could happen. But much to my surprise, I was informed that Victoria County basically has no zoning laws and that people can pretty much do whatever they please with their property, even if it affects the property values or the the peace and tranquility of another landowner. And so that's kind of how I got involved with Fraser. I asked him to come out to my property and and see what was going on. And I think he had a pretty good, you know, opportunity to see why I was concerned and and, you know, why I'm very much concerned about what the future plans are. I have to tell you, I have communicated my concerns also to the MP, Mike Callaway, who was looking into it. And I've communicated my concerns to the Parks Canada, who I think are responsible for enforcing, you know, kind of the rules and regulations around lighthouse preservation. I just I read the act myself, and I don't see how we, you know, RV park is consonant with a 19th century ancient lighthouse. And quite honestly, I don't I don't see how they could, you know, possibly get away with it. But that's what they're apparently trying to do. The the only, you know, I've I've actually hired a lawyer. I've hired a private attorney who feels that we would have a very strong case. But again, you know, I'm paying I'm paying for this out of my own pocket. And, you know, I just think Victoria County really has to be aware that this kind of stuff could happen. I mean, I would never in a million years have bought a very, very expensive property on the Atlantic Ocean next to a lighthouse property that I was assured was a federally protected property if I knew then that it was possible that someone could acquire it under a Lighthouse Protection Act and then turn it into an RV park. Not in a million years would I take such a chance.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments and your points are well taken. I'm going to open the floor to any of the counselors that have any questions for you. And we'll start with your counselor, Counselor Patterson, for comment and question.
Thank you, Warden. Good evening, Dr. Harless. As you mentioned, I toured the property with you a week ago Saturday, I believe it was. And you could almost, from his, Dr. Harless's property line, you could almost reach out and touch the machine that was working on the adjoining property, as he described with the lighthouse. And I think we had a bit of a discussion, too, what what value would this presentation be to council? And I think there's two things, just an awareness of what did happen to you or is presently happening to you. And I think it kind of maybe gives us some urgency to guard against these situations in the in the future. Just the provincial government is
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm I'm having a hard time. I'm having a hard time hearing you. I don't know what's going on with my phone, but I'm having a hard time.
Okay, want to try again? We closed in, okay. Okay, Dr. Harless, can you hear me now?
I can hear you better now, yes.
Okay, thank you. Basically, what I just was saying, what we had talked about when I visited your property a couple of weeks ago or so. And I think the things that committed this are an awareness of the situation. And as you described at the end, you know, you you buy a property with certain expectations and then you find out that things are not as they seem. And secondly, and I was just saying, the province, I believe, what what name do you they're looking at a planning, province-wide planning, is it?
The municipal planning strategy, yes.
Look, the province is presently looking at a municipal planning strategy, which, you know, hopefully will solve these problems. But secondly, I would like to move this evening that council contact or write the district planning commission, first of all, and the Department of Environment. And I don't know, doctor, if you have any more information about the environment part, because it is right on the shoreline of the
Sure, sure. I can share I can share that with you. I it I Fraser may have not, you know, may not have noticed this, but the cliff is very, very, very at risk for erosion. The navigational equipment has fallen in to the sea twice in the last 15 years. Dave Reynolds used to own the property that I I I live at now, and he could certainly add information as well. But the the bottom line is it's a very, very fragile ecosystem. And that's part of the reason why I was just appalled by what they did. They cut down trees that had, you know, deep, deep roots in the land and just, you know, something that was completely not in the best interest of preserving that that property. And it was so from an environmental standpoint. And then from a public park standpoint, I mean, if somebody goes over the cliff, you're talking about a fatal fall. It's not it's it's in some areas, it's straight down. It's it's even more dangerous than the bank where I live and which is right adjacent to it. So it's very high-risk presentation. I honestly, I don't even know what 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 the person was thinking. I it's almost as if they have no idea that the way you preserve a shoreline is to maintain the vegetation. You don't chop it all down. She uprooted everything. She uprooted these hedges that have been there for many, many decades. And it's just an incredibly exquisitely beautiful an incredibly exquisitely beautiful place. You know, the, the view is spectacular. It's a world, world-class view, no question about it. But the, what she did to the property should, you know, should never have been allowed. And I, I kicked myself because I didn't realize how far she was going to go. She just started cutting down things and I thought she would just, you know, cut back and by the time I had come back, she'd already mowed down the entire property, all these ancient shrubs, hedges, beautiful ancient trees. So the long and the short of it is, you know, without being overly emotional, she basically scarred the landscape, which does indeed have an environmental impact on that property and does put that navigational equipment at greater risk for going back into the sea and losing the, losing the coastline over time. That property really needs to be, have trees planted on it, not, not trees taken down.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Warden, maybe I'll hold that motion to see if anyone else has any comments.
Okay, just anybody else have any comments or questions before we entertain the motion? You're good, good, good?
Okay, so basically I move that Victoria County Council contact the district planning commission and the department of environment with our, explaining the situation.
Thank you, councillor. Do we have a seconder for that, please?
Second?
Seconded by the deputy warden, all in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion is carried. Just a couple of quick comments. You are correct, the only area of the county that has planting and zoning, land use planting and zoning is the area surrounding the village of Adac and that probably speaks more to the rural nature of our county. And next year, there is going to be enacted by the province of Nova Scotia minimum planning standards and municipal planning strategy. So these are reasons why the province is looking at, at those regulations. So we take that under advisement as well. We will forward your request or the information in your particular case to the department of environment and to the planning commission for further review and comment. And I just want to thank you very much for attending council tonight and letting us know your concerns particularly to vulnerable properties.
Thank you, thank you for giving me the opportunity to, to be there.
Thank you and good luck as you move forward. And thank you, thank you councillor Patterson for, for making arrangements for Dr. Harless to attend council tonight. We good?
Yep.
Thank you. We're going to move on to minutes of our last council meeting. They were circulated to you and that is for November 30th, 2020. They were circulated to you, you had a chance to review them. Are there any errors or omissions on, in those minutes?
Well, I think I spoke about some signage things under constituent concerns and they were supposed to be under TIR, I think.
Okay, that was signage? Yeah.
Yeah, you mentioned it under district concerns and they were actually TIR, correct.
I just noticed that when I got the list of TIR, they weren't on it because I had put them, mentioned them somewhere else, so...
Okay, and, and we won't change them, but in future, we'll just make sure the TIR issues will be captured under the TIR section of the agenda, even if they come later after we moved on, but they will be, they'll be captured both in the minutes and they will be added to the TIR list. So thank you for that, councillor.
Thank you.
Anything else committed to those minutes? We have a motion to approve the minutes for November 30th with those noted, the request to know to change by councillor Longba.
I make a motion to move the minutes with the adjustments made.
Thank you very much. Councillor Longba, do we have a seconder for that, please?
A second.
Seconded by councillor McNeil, all in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion is carried, the minutes have been approved.
Just one thing about the minutes, I want to compliment them on having the, the links, the links to the presentation. It's helpful for council afterwards, so I just wanted to make that.
Thank you and thank you, Stephanie. Any old business, CAO?
I just have a couple of things from prior council minutes and business that has arisen. I have, as of today, been in contact with the new member of the RCMP and we're going to be working together on getting a, what we received in the past related to stats on RCMP business and the new staff sergeant will be coming to council in the near future. Councillor McLeod had some questions and concerns related to solar lights. Can let you know that our Public Works has been contacting contractors and is also doing site visits with Nova Scotia Power and so we should hopefully be seeing light soon related to those. Related to the emergency phone in the District Four area, we're looking, we're working with EMO to try and get a pay phone, a pay phone in that area and still looking for some response from, from Bell on that phone. But there was an article this morning on CBC News related to the satellite phones that are down in the park and they get a direct call to Jasper, so they have a site for that. So we're investigating a pay phone in the area, if it's possible to do. Related to the land database or the land project that we want to look at, we have passed on the properties to our title searcher and we're waiting to get those back before we can see what we can do to move to the next steps. The Victoria County sign that had some issues or needed a little bit of a facelift has been worked on or is being worked on, so the, the damage on that is getting fixed. We're still pushing for the Voyant app to get more people signed up for that and we're encouraging everyone to sign up. We are also working with our senior safety officer so that she's going to do a presentation or a lunch, one of her sessions that she reaches out to seniors to see if she can get more of them engaged and signed up for it, so that's good. I heard back from Transport Canada today related to the helicopter flying altitude and the information that I got on that is that civil aviation doesn't regulate, it regulates based on safety and doesn't regulate based on noise at this time if they are outside of an airport environment. They said if there are concerns with, and they talked about a 500-foot distance and almost a bubble that if you are outside of the airport area or built-up environment, you have to be, have a 500-foot clearance. But if residents are concerned, they can take pictures, document the times and dates, call Transport Canada and they will investigate. However, it could take a while. They said the best plan is to work with the helicopter business related to it. So they, you know, there was a couple of other little things, but the long and the short of it was that's the best thing to do with that. We did have our cannabis committee meeting and there was a few takeaways that came from that and I had some discussions with the new staff sergeant related to some of our concerns also. And we're also going to be getting together with the, the new staff sergeant. So that was the helicopters. Barb, related to your resident that wanted the mailbox put back up? I believe that Canada Post has been in touch with you or they're going to be contacting you or you're going to be meeting up with them to visit the area?
Uh, yes. They haven't been in touch with me yet, but I did mention it to the lady at the post office today and she gave me a number to call to.
Okay, so we had some information, I'll pass that along to you as well, related to what we heard back on that.
Thank you.
Their rep wants to go and, and do a site visit related to that also. Yeah, that's my old business.
Any questions or comments to the CAO in regards to old business? Councillor Oregon?
Hi, Leanne, did you speak with the RCMP, the Ingest detachment about the bus stop in Neils Harbor?
Uh, no, I did not. No, I did not. I didn't, I thought that we were passing that on to the school board, no?
Well, I've contacted the school board twice. I was supposed to meet up with Tara and she has not contacted me again, so I was wondering if council could send, you know, a little letter to the school board to find out the reason why a sign can't be put there?
Right, yeah, okay.
And that's with Tara Gaskell?
Yes, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Just if you wouldn't mind, councillor, just in the form of a motion and then that we send the letter.
I move that we submit a letter to the Cape Breton Victoria Centre for Education to find out why a school bus sign cannot be put in Neils Harbor at the school bus stop.
Great, perfect. Do we have a seconder for that, please?
A second.
Seconded by councillor McDonald, all in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion is carried and the letter will be sent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other business coming out of old business? I can report on one item, it was a, on the action list, I mentioned that I had called a constituency officer, the constituency office of the Minister of Justice requesting that we had an applicant that was interested in sitting on our police advisory committee. That was in October, I did not get a response. I did phone today his office in Halifax and left a message with that information and if he would contact me, so I didn't hear from him today, not necessarily that I expect to, but I did follow up with a second request, this time to, directly to his office, so. And when I was speaking to the individual there, she was formerly from Iona, so I know as a Victoria County resident that will be looked after, so. Just an update on that. So that is old business. It's not on the agenda this evening, but we are going to take a 15-minute break at 6 o'clock. So we, is there any other final questions or comments in regards to old business before we take a short break? We good? We, I'm sorry councillor?
Well, I just wanted to give an update on my famous light that I've been working on and now we're not going to have a light because I didn't know there was a difference between a power pole and a telephone pole, but apparently a telephone pole is shorter and they can't put a transformer on it. So unfortunately, he would need a new pole that would be around $1,000 and I said I don't think the, the county will pay for that, so he's going to try and do something on his own.
Thank you for that update councillor. Any other final comments before we take our break? Good, we're 15 minutes, which will be 6:30. Good, we're fifteen minutes, which will be six thirty. Thank you very much. We're back in live council for Monday, December fourteenth. Just a point of clarifications we referenced earlier that we approved a recommendation from the committee of the whole meeting that happened just prior to council this evening, four o'clock. Uh, there was a recommendation, uh, the deputy warden chairs that, um, committee, so, uh, if you would perhaps just elaborate on what that recommendation was, sir, please.
Uh, thank you, warden. Yes, the, the recommendation from the committee of the whole was that we conduct a rate study, so we've given permission for staff to, uh, go forward with, uh, getting a rate study for the water utilities in Victoria County.
Thank you very much, deputy. Any questions or comments about that? We're good. We were all here, so we're all aware of what that was. Uh, new business, C A O's report.
Yeah, so we had a department head meeting recently, just a few things that came out of it. So, senior safety, uh, in Cassandra's department, she has a senior safety newsletter that should be coming out shortly. You should be seeing that coming in the mail. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, she has been having meetings with Public Works to get, uh, set up for seniors to get signed up for Voyant, and we'll be doing some, some sessions related to that, uh, showing how user friendly it is. There's also some concerns over, that she's, um, uh, being made aware of concerns over some scams that are happening in the county. Uh, so if everyone could just be aware that these are actually happening to, um, members of our own community, be it financial, emotional, elder abuse, uh, et cetera, uh, please be aware of it, and if there is something that is triggering you, um, please, uh, reach out to the senior safety officer for some help. Uh, she's also going to be taking some mental health first aid training, which sounds like a really interesting course. Uh, she's going to be working with Dan to put together a section on the new website, uh, related to senior friendly businesses, which I think came up at one of the last council sessions as well. And, uh, she wants all to know that, uh, transit punch passes are now available, uh, for the transit system that we have, and it gives a, I think you get one free when you, uh, get a, a senior's punch pass. Uh, and tourism in Dan's department. So Dan has been working on this winter readiness program, uh, and he's been working with Victoria County, Inverness County, ECOA, D C B A. It's an initiative and it could be a two-year program that, uh, he's working on. He's been working on trails. He's having conversations with groups around the island, and we need to emphasize that our, uh, county, we needed to be a countywide trail system and trail committee, not just, um, concerned with one area because, uh, the whole network of trails need to work together. He's also working on some training initiatives starting to be rolled out for the winter season. Um, uh, he's been working endlessly on the website, and the photos tonight with council will be one of the last steps before we go live. Um, they're also, uh, between communications and tourism and recreation, they're working on an initiative over the winter months also where we're going to try and do some short, uh, video blurbs on the website about getting to know your county. Um, so that's going to be a new initiative that's being worked on, and we're also working on a policy related to, um, the room and Zoom and how we, um, uh, how we run meetings in the future, uh, because this is more than likely going to be the, the way of the future. Um, Lydia in the Recreation Active Living Department, Lydia's been working with Sabda, uh, the Sabda Time Bank and working on a newcomers project there, and I believe there's also a newcomer welcome project that's happening through, um, some of the other counselors that's going on. So, uh, she should be reaching out, or you might have been talking to her already about the welcome package. I know there's one in Bedeck that is happening, so she's got some, she's gathering some information related to that. Uh, she's planning a winter staff event to get out and get active also. Uh, she's planning a, or she's working on a gender equity proposal for a ski, cape, smoky project. She's looking into an expressive arts workshop to happen around the county. She's also looking for place making and funding opportunities, working with senior safety, uh, Cassandra and Dan, um, on that project. Um, she's also pushing for year-round trails and looking for funding for year-round trails, which also ties into the Victoria County Trails, um, full countywide initiative. Uh, she's working on her last steps of the Active Living Strategy that we had the presentation, our last council session related to, and she should be releasing her final draft soon. Uh, her outdoor seating initiative has wrapped up, and she placed some outdoor seating at almost all the schools around the county, and it's been very well received. She did a hike that I believe some of our counselors was on last week. She said it was very well attended and a great hike. Um, just to let everyone know, uh, she started, or, uh, it's been an initiative that's been, uh, the staff have been working on for the last, um, few years, and she has sort of taken it under her wing this year, but we did an adopt a family that, um, we raised funds for that, and in total thirteen hundred dollars has been raised to help some, um, needy families at this time of year when it's all very important. Um, she has put a food bank bin downstairs, and all are encouraged to place items in the food bank, um, bin. There are some lists of items that are in greater need than others, and she will more than, more than happily share that with you if you are willing to put, um, some food in the food bank bin. And she's also working on a weaving class initiative. In Amy's department in finance, um, she sent out some year-to-date information to council. If you have any questions on it, please contact Amy related to it. She's also working on some weekly deposit reconciliations that, uh, are going to be done weekly rather than monthly on a go-forward basis. And audit planning has also happened this week, so Grand Thornton was down to meet with staff and meet with Amy and I, and they will be having a, an audit committee, um, plan that they'll be bringing to the audit committee in the, I think they were talking January for that, Amy? So that will be a committee meeting that we'll be having. Uh, Public Works, our Waste Management Review has, um, is in its final draft stages. We had a meeting with the consultant that we have last week and, um, are taking, they'll be coming and presenting to council their recommendations and, um, observations from our Waste Management, uh, Department. Um, Waste Management, or, sorry, Public Works is also working with the Highland National Park on a water system and, on, on their water system and possibly some changes to that. We're still in the early stages of planning that, but we're moving towards the next phase. And also our two water operators have officially received their D R C certifications. So that's a huge step, and congratulations to them. Our Economic Development Department, which is Patrick from Cape Breton Partnership, he's been working on tie-ins files, and he says that he's received an additional forty-five members taking training that is offered, so that, when he says additional, that's on top of his original, uh, post that went out, so I believe it's probably about double that number, um, of actual members that are taking the training. Um, there's some new investment attractions that he's dealing with. One is based in Bedeck and one is based in Cape North. He's also doing an R F P for a business case in District One. This, over the last, uh, little while, he's done four different restaurant while, he's done four different restaurant business reviews around the county, and he'll go into your organization to, and obviously, he's gone into four business, or sorry, restaurants, but they go in and they see where you're at and where your projection should be and do a little analysis on it. He's also working on a venture tourism and the mountain bike strategy, and looking to do some things over the winter to be spring-ready, and working on an investor package related to the housing strategy. And again, we'll be working on the housing strategy when we have some title searches done on the land that we actually own. He's working with broadband, and just was mentioning that the Elon Musk system will also be in, available sooner rather than later, and I'm not really sure how that falls in or comes into play with the Develop Nova Scotia Initiative that's going on. But what came up out of that was some concerns over satellite traffic that could be going overhead also, related to satellite internet, so it's something that we're going to have to investigate. And he's also scheduling some business session rounds up, roundups. Some other things that we're working on, again, we're monitoring COVID, seeing how it goes. Not sure how our next council session is going to be, but hopefully the numbers stay down. If it's not in person, we will be, or going live Zoom, but we will keep everyone up to date on that. We had the water rate study that we have now a motion on, and just wanted to let everyone know that this Thursday, so that's 17th, the courthouse building here is going to be doing a cleanup day. We did one a few, several years back, but packing things up, labeling them, destroying items that fall under records management that are at the appropriate time for destruction and cleaning up, just doing a, we're taking a day and actually cleaning up. We're not going to be, the door will be open downstairs for payments to come in, but we're encouraging, anyone that comes here will be allowed in, obviously, to make their payment, but we're hoping that we're not scheduling very many meetings on that day, because we're trying to focus on getting a fresh start for the new January year coming in. So that's what I have for that.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Yes, councillor Oregon.
I was just wondering if maybe Dan and Lydia could contact Parks Canada, maybe even talk to Larry Dofne here, to reopen and maintain and groom the cross-country ski trails that they used to have in the Black Brook area and also at Broad Cove Campground. That'd be, you know, really, really good for the communities.
Yeah, Dan, if you have a comment related to that, for sure. You want a mic up here? Okay.
Thanks, Jackie. It just, I took the up, hang on here. I had a discussion today with Bonnie at Parks Canada as well. It was part of a DCVA marketing committee update. They did indicate they were looking to do more winter activity programming. This year was slated to start a lot of it, but there, it's probably going to be next year at this point. They are going to attempt a few things this year. They haven't rolled out exactly what they are. So they are going to update some of their winter programming, and they are looking to the future to do a whole lot more. I'm not sure exactly what that's going to include, but we will follow up for that.
Sorry, anything else? Any other questions or comments for the CAO in regards to a report this evening? Thank you very much for that. We're going to move on to the taxation report.
All right. So I received a report from Amy today related to the taxation update as of December 14th, 2020. So as of December 14th, our total outstanding is 1.77 million, which is compared to this time last year, 1.802 million. So we're actually 29,000 better off this year than we were last year. Our current outstanding as of December 14th is 1.14 million, which is 7,000 less than this time last year, which was 1.15 million. Our arrears outstanding as of December 14th, 629,000 compared to 651,000 the year before. So it's 22,300 to the better. So we're, we're better in both those areas, but I, I, I'm optimistic about it, but I just want everyone just to be cautious that, you know, this could be an anomaly that this is happening this year, and our next couple of years are going to be very, I feel like they are going to be a struggle for some. Hopefully not. Hopefully it's, we're prosperous as, as in the past. So our arrears are still a large number. Our first 30-day notice letters and final 60-day notice letters have gone out for accounts in arrears, and every account in arrears is tracked using a master list, and the next tax sale that we have scheduled is March 23rd, 2021. And we'll have to play it by ear how that's going to go, if it's going to be a tax sur, a tender process, or if it's going to be in person. We'll keep monitoring. The tax installment program is still avail, still available for application, so there have been two new ones that have applied, two new businesses that have applied since the last, since our last council session. So good news, but we still have a lot of work to do. I say it's good news, but our numbers are still extremely high.
Good. Thank you very much, Leanne. Are there any questions or comments in regards to the taxation report this evening? Good. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to Department of Transportation Infrastructure Renewal Concerns. We'll start with District Number Five, councillor Patterson. Any?
Nothing I can think of. They did 99% of that stump clearing of the Patterson Road, and they stopped. But anyway, we'll take it as it is. It looks a lot better than it was.
Sure does. Thank you. Deputy Warden, any issues for TIR this evening?
No issues this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Oregon. Any questions?
No issues, but just an update. They are working on the White Point Road, which is good to see, the erosion there.
Very good. Thank you very much. Councillor McDonald, anything in District Eight for TIR?
Yes, Warden, thank you. Just three for this evening. There's shoulder erosion that needs attention at two locations along the Bay St. Lawrence Road, around the civic area 564 and Asby Bay. I have that written down as one of the mentions for TIR, please. Second is the turnoff to the St. Margaret's Village, which leads in the CAFS across on the Co-op store. Material has yet to be placed for that shoulder area, and still receiving calls in regard to that turn, turn down. And lastly, where the Morrison's Restaurant is located there in Cape North, there's a pavement drop that needs immediate attention. It leads into the mailboxes in that area and getting calls from people that, if TIR could put some gravel there just to bring it up level to, there won't be a great, great asset. And that's, that's it for TIR this evening.
Thank you very much, councillor. Councillor Long, any issues for TIR?
Yes, I wondered about the Big Harbor Road that's in really bad state, if there's any, like, if it's in the works in the future that they're going to do any paving on that road. And would speed limits be under now?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, the speed limit, when you go around Goose Cove, there's a heavily populated area there, and there's people who walk, and they would like to see the speed limit lowered between the Meadow Road and Rooster Hill is like a really, there's a lot of houses, and there's small children, so they wondered if the, the speed limit could be dropped there. Also, a signage thing, it's at Plaster Mines, the address there, the mailing address, is actually Old Big Harbor Road, but there's no sign that says Old Big Harbor Road. So often, if emergency vehicles or deliveries are happening, they go to Big Harbor, and they don't go to Old Big Harbor Road. So I was asked if it was possible to put another sign on the plaster mines saying Old Big Harbor Road. And the Murray Road needs to be graded. And that's it.
Thank you very much, councillor. We have noticed those. Thank you. Councillor MacLeod, anything for TIR?
No this time. Thanks.
Okay. Councillor McNeil, by chance, anything?
Just, just two new issues. Actually, there's three culverts through Iona, two right down from the legion in Iona that's blocked, and one next, 24349, highway 223 in Iona, so. That has to be looked at. It's, it's being, that one is being undermined, and the water is going underneath the culvert. The rest I have is basically the same as the last time, so. The one concern I do have, though, is the erosion on the Grass Cove Road. That has to be looked at soon, even if the pylons are now down in the lake, so they have to put something else there to protect people from milling over.
Thank you very much, councillor. I have none this evening for District Number Three. And move on. Are there any notice of motions this evening?
Can I just make a comment just before we move on? So just as long as everyone understands the new processes that you're to contact Steve, okay, as long as everyone knows that, and we'll note them here for...
Yeah, they're captured in the minutes, so, but we know that you brought your residents' concerns forward. We're going to start with district concerns. We'll start again with councillor Patterson, please.
No, nothing to report, Warden.
Thank you, sir. Deputy Warden?
All's good in District Six.
Thank you. Councillor Oregon?
I have two concerns this evening. I was visiting the Enviro Depot the other day and noticed it was really cold, and they told me that they have two heaters and one has not been, well, they have three heaters. Two are working, one is not, and that's been on the repair list for a long time, so can we look into that?
Sure.
And I know I'm going to bring it up again and again and again. I mean, there is no washroom in that building. They walked to the fire hall, and I take a note that one of the workers twice last winter was injured, walking down and slipping fell. So this is a safety concern for the people working there. And I was approached by two members of the Neals Harbour, New Haven Volunteer Fire Department. With COVID, there's been no fundraising allowed in a lot of the conventional ways that it was done in the past. So the fire departments are struggling and receiving no aid for COVID from the government. Is it possible for the county to look into the provincial and federal government, and maybe theirselves, that a one-time fund amount of money can be sent to each fire department to help them get through this winter?
Okay, thank you. I will mention, just on that subject, I was sitting in on a municipal, provincial, and federal representatives' meeting this morning, and that was one of the issues that came up, and it's been forwarded to Minister McClellan. He was at the meeting. He said that he would look into that volunteer groups such as fire departments and legions, et cetera. I think the legions have got some funding. They definitely talked about fire halls and community halls, so we'll follow up with him and to see that he brings that forward. So yeah, we definitely can do that. And if there's nothing there, then maybe we'll come back and have the conversation with the municipality. Thank you, councillor. Councillor McDonald?
Yes, Warden, not really any district concerns, but I just wanted to, I guess, touch base just briefly on volunteers in District Eight, and then update the council with the North Highlands Nordic Ski Building. The groomer building is, is up upon completion, just waiting for power hookup, and it's all been built from the ground level on volunteer bases only. So I think that's something that should be recognized, is all volunteer involvement with that. And secondly, with, just to mention to the Bay St. Lawrence Community Centre, who have recently had three supper food drives that they raised an upwards of seven, seven and a half thousand dollars for three people that were in need in their community, just to show appreciation to those volunteers in District Eight.
Thank you very much. Duly noted in the minutes this evening. Well done. Going to go to councillor McNeil, District Number One.
Just one thing. I, I was talking to Robert about erecting a Little Nares Welcome Sign at the entrance there, just off the ferry, and right now, the, the community themselves are going to do it, so he doesn't have to do that again, so, okay.
Anything else?
That's it.
I'm going to go to councillor Longva, then back to my district, and then councillor MacLeod, and so councillor Longva, anything?
Trying to trick me.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, when I was campaigning, and I've been getting emails since about transparency in council, and I'd just like to say that the newsletter that came out, I don't know if that's like a one-time thing, or if that's something that's going to be like a usual thing, but I thought that was awesome, that it came out for those that don't have internet. I'm new here, so, I mean, I think anyone can come to council meetings, space permitting. And also, now we're live, so anyone that has computer can see what we're talking about. So I see that as really very transparent, but it's nice to have that newsletter, you know, saying what we're doing. And when it's not COVID times, people would like to see, like, town halls where they can come and hear the latest news. And I did hear one thing about the newsletter was the word broadband. A lot of people, well, not a lot of people, but some people don't know what the word broadband means. I'm not 100%, I mean, I know it's like high-speed internet. I'm not really sure how much it encompasses, but the regular guy, like, some people just didn't know what the word meant. And I think that's it.
Thank you very much, and we certainly will acknowledge you. The newsletter comes out three to four times a year, and, and the author of that newsletter is Jocelyn Bethune, so she gets credit for that lovely newsletter that went out. So thank you, Jocelyn. It's noted in the minutes, and it'll be on the next newsletter. Just kidding. So councillor McNeil?
Hi, Kate.
Did you, so I'm sorry, it's me. Sorry, I, I even fooled myself tonight, councillor Longva, so. Three things, just one, I just wanted to make reference to this municipal observer that goes across the province to every elective representative, and the municipal council gets a copy of this, and staff as well. And we were fortunate this edition to have a picture of Vic, from Victoria County on the front page, so we just want to send them a note, thank them to do that, and it is up the waterfront of the deck, so. And next time, it'll be one of the other districts, I hope. It just speaks to the beautiful scenery we have here. Second is, just mentioned earlier about Lydia Kerr, we just want to acknowledge that we attended one of her hike sessions, and both councillor Longva and I did the 10-kilometer hike, and it was well-attended, and it was well worth doing, and so we just want to mention that in the minutes as well. The other thing I just wanted to mention tonight, earlier today, the funding was announced for the Bedeck Waterfront Project. It's 1.1 million dollars, 540,000, 550,000, and I can't be corrected on the amounts, from Develop Nova Scotia, another half million, or thereabouts, from ACOA. So that is exciting news for not only Bedeck, but Southern Victoria County, and is certainly excited, and we'll be getting updates on that project as we move forward. And I want to thank council for their support for supporting that project, because we also contributed as a funding partner. And I know that the, the representatives on that committee are ecstatic today because of that announcement, so. That's going to be an anchor for development in this community and into Victoria County, so we look forward as that moves forward with the development. So those are, I don't have any motions on, through my district concerns tonight. The last district concerns, District Number Two, councillor MacLeod, please.
Okay, thank you. I have just two. Just one is just for setup in, set in the minutes. It's about, a couple of residents are talking about the vaccines, the masks, the proceeding, the Department of Health is doing, and they're not okay with that. Just want to just clarify, the local government, we don't make that decisions. The decisions are set from Dr. Streng. Strange's office and province and federal government. This is one of the, my points. And the second is, is after the tragic events the last week, I would like to make a motion to send a letter to the Minister of Transportation regarding the speed limit in the section in the TransCanada Irving. We have around 15 years asking to put that speed limit at six, less than 70. So I'm asking if we can send it for 60 kilometers. And I would like a copy with, to the deputy minister, too.
Very good.
Because he was, the last time he came and see the site, and after that, we just, they, they make a decision for 70 kilometers. So, and that's it.
I think we have a motion to ask the Minister of Transportation to reduce the speed limit at the Irving Tim Horton site. That is currently an 80-kilometer zone, down to 60 kilometers. Am I correct?
Correct.
So we have a second for that, please.
A second.
So, sorry. Counsel McNeil, seconded by Counsel McNeil. All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded. Motion's carried, and thank you for that, Counselor. It's very important.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any other final district concerns? We're going to move on to committee reports. Anybody have any, I know we haven't had many committees meeting just because of COVID, et cetera, et cetera. Does anybody have any updates on any of the committees? Counsel McNeil?
Just one thing. I was in contact with Eileen Crosby today. She's the chair of the Biosphere Committee, and she was looking for if we have any updates on our climate change action plan for Victoria County, and if that could be sent to her. They, they have to do a periodic review every few years as a biosphere, so they want to send this information into.
Thank you very much. We'll, I'll leave that with the CAO.
I feel like there's no updates. However, I will check into that to see if we have, if there's any, if there are any actions that we've taken.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel McLeod?
I realize if we can have a meeting, the Victoria Transit, I have some, some stuff to, to talk about it. So which, it can be Zoom, no, we can meet. So we can just, the staff can send me dates. We can do that.
Do you want to meet before or after Christmas, do you think?
Well, tomorrow I will let you know. I have to talk to the office, and that way, for sure, maybe in January, but it depends the information.
Sounds good. Thank you. Any other committee reports? Good. Thank you very much. Any bylaws this evening?
Yep, the second reading of the commercial district development initiative incentive bylaw. It's a long one, long.
We, yeah. It's been circulated for the second time. We have a motion to, unless there's anybody that wants to speak against the bylaw. If not, we need a motion to approve the second reading.
Make a motion that we approve the second reading?
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Do we have a second for that, please?
A second.
Seconded by Counsel McDonald. All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded. Motion's carried. The second reading has been approved.
We'll now have to do a public hearing related to that, and we will be posting that in the paper.
Right. There is a regulatory process that we have to send notice out, and it'll be going through the Cape Breton Post, I suspect. So any policy reviews this evening?
None currently, no.
Correspondence. Do you have any correspondence?
I do. So I have received a letter. It's from Victoria County Home Support Services, and it is related to the Tech Connect Pilot Program. So it says, Dear Members of Council, the Tech Connect Pilot Program is a collaboration between the Senior Safety Program, the Bidek Public Library, and Victoria County Home Support Services. This initiative partnership runs from December 2020 through May 2021. Participants receive a transit punch pass, the use of an iPad, and Internet for the duration of the program, in-person, in-person support at the library, and monthly phone support. Since our launch, we are at 50% capacity. In an effort to remain the, to fill the remaining nine spots in a timely manner, we are seeking your help. We encourage the counselors to connect with their constituents to identify participants who are over the age of 55 and have no regular access to a computer or Internet. Interested persons can call 902-295-2877 to sign up. So specifically, there are participant spots available in District One, District Three, District Five, District Six, District Seven, and District Eight. So if you could ask your constituents to see if they would be interested in taking part in this. It's just a learning program. They'll be given an iPad and a free punch pass to get down to the library. So it's a great initiative to get, to get connected.
Do we put that on our website, or is it already there?
We can.
Yeah.
It's already there.
It's already there. It's already, I wonder, is there any other communication we can send out through the municipality to assist to getting people interested in that program?
It's already out.
Yep, which is, the newsletter's coming out soon.
Exactly.
Yep.
Okay, great. I received one item of correspondence. It's a request from the Victoria County Memorial Hospital Charitable Foundation. This is to inform you that the last hospital foundation meeting, it was agreed to extend two seats to municipal council to sit as members of the municipal hospital board. These nominees are at your discretion and will be full working members of our board. I would like to take this opportunity to welcome to, to your participation, look forward to working with those counselors that you select. Would you decide who will represent council? And please forward the names to Teresa Buchanan, board fundraiser. Thank you for your interest in this matter, and that is signed by Charles Chuck Thompson. So we need two, two nominees, and my understanding there is no representatives from Iona currently on their board. So.
I'll volunteer to be on the board.
Thank you. So, and if it was okay, I would like to sit on it, too, because hosp was located right in the village, and we can certainly put a, an alternate in case either one of us are not available. So Counsel McLeod would be the alternate. So if you, we need a motion of, from council, I'm sorry, Deputy Warden, we need a motion of council to appoint the three, two, two and an alternate.
Do we have a motion?
I make that a motion.
Motion on the table. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded. Motion passed.
Thank you very much, Deputy, and I will leave that with you to notify them that we will be regular, to regular council and an alternate. Is there anything else to come to council tonight? Yes, Counsel McLeod?
I just, we know Heather retired, so I was just, she's in my district, and, and I worked with her for, for my first term, so I just want to congratulate her. If we can send a, I make a motion, if we can send a letter to her to congratulate her and good luck in her new endeavors.
Very well.
If she would like to come to council, you know, next January, I think there's some celebration, the years, like I, I don't know, if the staff can check it out.
Okay, we'll extend the invite for the January 5th council?
Yeah, yeah, she, she's a little.
So that was, that was the motion, Counselor? So we have a second for that?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Deputy Warden, and certainly echo the, all in favor, sorry.
Aye.
Contrary-minded. Motion's carried. We certainly will send a letter. She, 41 years to service here, which is remarkable, in the municipality, and we will certainly miss her as we go forward, but we wish her the best in her retirement. We have staff appreciation notification on January 5th. I'm sorry, it's 43 years, not 41. So with that, thank you for the correction, and my apologies, Heather. So with that, we have staff appreciation recognition on January 5th, I think. So we'll make sure that we, she has an invite to, to attend that night, and we'll recognize her formally at council at that time. Thank you for bringing that up. Appreciate that, Counsel McLeod. Is there anything else to come to council tonight? Any questions from online? Very good. Well, just on behalf of council and staff, we want to wish our fellow counselors, all our staff, and all our residents to have a happy and particularly safe holidays as we move forward. We won't be meeting again until January 5th, so please enjoy your Christmas season and enjoy the Happy New Year and good luck. Moved to adjourn by Counsel McNeil. Favor? See you next year.